...from Vermont.
Practice, B O G E D, H. So you do that for one year.
Hello?
First of those, first three fingers and then...
Hello?
Hi, this is Karen Freeman from Vermont on the phone from the Vermont Health and Conservation Board. Thanks for the meeting and for letting me in.
So that's your important...
Thanks, Coach. Check in to the ear. I don't know those fingers.
I can help position it.
As far as I'm concerned. But I'm happy to go with you now. Graham can... Graham won't need to have this meeting so after...
No.
And then third finger is third fret.
That's C.
Is that a C? Wait, I've never really talked to somebody...
It's so insane. But it's all different things. I don't know, it was there. Here, I...
You get it?
Yeah.
Down, this is just...
Yeah, no, I've seen at least a half an hour.
Alexandra, est-ce que Jill va sur la ligne?
Oui, il est en train de se connecter.
I know.
So, yeah, there it is. Oh, it's not, I gotta get my power up to presentation mode.
Fun stuff, huh?
Oh, yeah. I know, it definitely helps.
Remind me of that next time we're considering, how about a community meeting?
Right, you're right, I mean, I think it's a...
We've got the agenda up on the...
All right, and do you want to put the agenda? Two? And this is on? Good evening, good evening. Is this on?
There you go.
All right. Good evening. Hello? I'm Julie Moore, I'm the Secretary of Natural Resources, and we're going to get started here in just a moment. A couple of points of order as we get into this evening. For anyone who is interested in a mask but didn't bring one, we do have some available by the door. We'll also put back there a stack of copies of the agenda, but we've got that up on the screen right now for those who are interested. Restrooms are back out this door and to the right. Our plan for this evening is severalfold. We are going to be recording the meeting unless there are any objections so that we can make it available to folks who have let us know they are unable to participate tonight. There will be a series of presentations by technical staff from the Agency of Natural Resources on five different components of the work we're engaged in here in the Memphremagog watershed. And then we will hear from some of the local watershed and conservation organizations. And then there will be an opportunity for you all to speak. We will pass around a sign-up sheet. We'll ask anyone who wishes to speak to limit their remarks to two minutes. And we're committed, I know that the agenda suggests a 7:00 PM wrap-up time, but we're committed to making sure there's an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak tonight to be able to do such. So, and for those of you participating online, if you want to indicate in the chat that you would also like to make a public comment, we will record those as well and alternate between speakers in the room and speakers online in allowing for public comment. I would like to introduce the team from the Agency of Natural Resources that's here with me tonight. First, from our Watershed Management Division and the Department of Environmental Conservation, we have the Division Director Pete Leflam. And from his team here in the room is Oliver Pearson, who manages our Lakes and Ponds Program, and Ben Copans, who's probably a familiar face to most as he's the local basin planner. In addition, Eric Palmer, who's the Fisheries Division Director from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and one of our fisheries biologists, Pete Emerson, are here on the panel. And then I believe online, we are joined by Rick Levy from the Watershed Management Division, Casey Catherine from the Solid Waste Program, and possibly Amy Polagic and Nick Giannetti, also from our Wastewater Management Program. I don't know if we've confirmed if they've logged on, Oliver.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet, but hopefully.
Nick Giannetti has joined us.
Okay, so hopefully we have technical experts that will be able to answer questions should you have them, and certainly look forward to sharing kind of the current available information. I just want to start by thanking you all for coming out tonight. Part of, you know, one of the biggest challenges at times is engaging the public in robust dialogue about the work needed to protect and steward our natural resources. And the sheer number of people in the room tonight is heartening. I understand that the conversation may be hard or challenging at times, but we welcome that. I think the alternative is far worse where there are no one paying attention, no one who is concerned about ensuring the long-term water quality of places beautiful as Lake Memphremagog. So my thanks to you for making the time to come this evening. And with that, I will turn it over to Ben. He's going to start with a presentation on the work being done to develop what we call a tactical or watershed basin plan.
Ben, I might introduce, I might interrupt you once or twice to admit people who are joining late.
Okay. Thanks, and again, really great to see everyone out here tonight. So my name again is Ben Copans, Watershed Planner with the Water Investment Division. And I'm really just kicking off a tactical basin planning process for the Lake Memphremagog watershed. And so just wanted to give an introduction to the tactical basin planning process and kind of where we're at. So if you want to go on to the next slide?
Can you just ask if the people in teams are seeing this, there should be?
Yep, can folks on teams hear this or see this?
Yeah, it looks, Oliver.
Great. Yeah, so in the state of Vermont, we have broken up the state into 15 tactical basins, and we develop a plan for each one of these basins every five years. These basins are really our guidebook for how we're going to protect and restore our waters in each of these basins. And it, the tactical basin plans serve a lot of functions. They help to implement our federal and state water quality rules. And they're also the vehicle for which we implement our cleanup plans, which we call our Total Maximum Daily Loads or TMVLs. And so right now, we're just kicking off, in 2017, we published our last tactical basin plan for the Lake Memphremagog Tomofobia and Quatar Cook watershed. And in 2019, we actually started this cycle with a round of monitoring in the watershed. And then 2019, we did some assessment of all that data. And now we're using all that information to kick off the tactical basin planning process now. And we're going to try to complete this tactical basin plan by 2022. We'll go on to the next slide. So most of you know the Lake Memphremagog watershed, which is the biggest feature in this basin, which is the Black, Barton, and Clyde rivers, as well as the Johns River and directly into Lake Memphremagog. But this basin also includes the Tomofobia and Quatar Cook watersheds, which make up the Vermont portions of the St. Francis River Basin. So I want to say we did, we have accomplished a lot since our 2017 plan. So we've done a lot of work in our agricultural landscape for the Orleans County Conservation District. They've been implementing lots of best management practices on farms, and we've been able to do some follow-up monitoring to show some phosphorus reductions. The Memphremagog Watershed Association is really taking the lead in developing some designs for stormwater treatment for some of the larger drainages in the city of Newport. And then we've been doing lots of work along our lake shores to do lakeshore restoration projects. Again, in coordination with a lot of our lake associations and with the Northwoods Stewardship Center really leading the way in terms of implementing those projects. And then also a pretty significant effort with the Vermont Fish and Wildlife Department to start up our riparian lands restoration effort along some of the streams in the watershed. But we know there's a lot of work to do. And so this tactical basin plan is really going to focus on continuing to implement the phosphorus cleanup plan for Lake Memphremagog. You know, continuing to work with farms, roads, developed lands. We're going to be trying, working to address several agricultural impaired streams and ponds in the watershed. Also looking at some of the increasing nutrient trends we see in some of our ponds up in the watershed. And continuing to work to restore, you know, aquatic habitat to support our fisheries and address flood resilience in our watershed communities. And many of those things also work to help in terms of implementing the cleanup plan for Lake Memphremagog. And finally, communicating the monitoring plans and outcomes related to the Brown Bullhead, as well as the sampling efforts of PFOS, which we're going to talk about later today. And so I do want to just make the point that our tactical basin plans really deal with community-based efforts to address those issues. We have existing permit programs that are really the process by which individual permits are led, and that's not really the focus of our tactical basin plan. There's public processes associated with each of those that's independent from the tactical basin planning process. So in terms of next steps, right now, we're going to be putting out a public survey over the next two months to get some public input on community concerns and information. We're collecting all the data internally. We're updating a report card on all the things we've accomplished from our last tactical basin plan. And then we're going to start to engage the community in some community discussions and meetings around agricultural issues and all of these topics which come up through the tactical basin planning process. And then we have internal and external review periods with the goal of getting the final plan in place by the end of 2022. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Oliver to talk a little bit more about some of the efforts on the lake.
Oliver's doing that, I'll just jump back in briefly. I failed in my initial remarks to acknowledge our important collaboration and partners in both the Quebec Ministry of the Environment, as well as the Co-Joseph St. Francis Watershed Organization. And believe that Julie Grenier is on the line tonight and will also be speaking in part to some of the shared sampling work we're doing. But there's also, as many of you I'm sure know, an international or joint international steering committee composed of representatives from Vermont and the province of Quebec that really guides our overall water quality work and is integral in some of the phosphorus reduction efforts. So with that, I'll turn it over to Oliver.
Great, thanks, Secretary Moore. Good evening, my name's Oliver Pearson. I manage the Lakes and Ponds Program for Vermont D E C. And in five minutes or less, I'm going to try to talk about what we're doing, building on what Ben just presented on, on reducing phosphorus loads to Lake Memphremagog from the watershed, and also the monitoring. And so, you know, prior to, a couple of years ago, before the lesions were first detected on the Brown Bullhead and, excuse me, and PFAS was detected in Sherbrooke, phosphorus was the Agency of Natural Resources, one of our principal focuses in Lake Memphremagog in terms of water quality, along with aquatic invasive species prevention issues. So I know there's other topics that we're talking about here tonight, but from my perspective, keeping our attention on reducing phosphorus loads and trying to take this, what is now considered an impaired lake and restore it to where it meets Vermont's water quality standards should remain one of the state's and the local community's principal priorities for Memphremagog. Go ahead, Ben. Yeah, it's, get it. So just some background on this, I'm going to stand here so I can read what I wrote. Memphremagog's an interesting international water body with 73% of its surface area in Quebec, but around 71% of its watershed in Vermont. So what happens in Vermont influences a lake which is binational, but three-quarters of which is in Quebec. So as I mentioned, the Vermont portion of the lake is considered impaired. It doesn't meet our standard for this type of water body of 14 parts per billion of phosphorus. In September of 2017, the state put forth a phosphorus total maximum daily load or phosphorus reduction plan to address the sources of phosphorus impairment and restore the lake. The Quebec portion of the lake does meet applicable provincial standards, but through the Quebec-Vermont Steering Committee, which is a joint group of actors on both sides of the border, we've worked very closely on both modeling what we need to reduce phosphorus loads to the base and both sides to the lake, excuse me, and both sides of the watershed, and implement projects and share information. So that's a group that meets at least twice a year, sometimes more regularly, to share information and coordinate activities. So just the big picture is, you know, over the last five years, Vermont state agencies have spent almost $7 million to, on clean water projects in the Memphremagog Basin. What has that gotten us? That's gotten us about a four metric ton reduction in phosphorus loads to the lake, primarily from agriculture projects. One, because we have recommended, excuse me, required agricultural practices in place where we can estimate the amount of phosphorus load reduction from those practices. And that's also one of the principal forms of land use in the watershed. We're also trying to reduce phosphorus loads from other land use types, be it roads, be it shoreline properties, as Ben mentioned. And as we come up with the modeling coefficients to estimate the load reduction from those types of interventions, that figure will only increase. Go ahead, Ben. So this is sort of a busy slide, I'll just point out a few things. This is our lake scorecard for Lake Memphremagog. And what it shows, there's a few sort of key takeaways. Is one, we have a very stable total phosphorus concentration going back, you know, to 1984. You see it sort of hovering around 15 to 20 parts per billion. Today, it's at about 19, and the target in the TMVL, as I said, is 14. So this is a large system, it's a large lake. All these great interventions we're doing in the watershed are going to take time to show an impact in terms of the lake's total phosphorus concentration. So right now, that's stable, and that's more or less backed up when we go out in the spring less regularly to collect that data. I believe Chuck Goulding is here. He's the current lake monitor, who goes out at least eight times during the summer to collect this data. So thanks very much to him for that support. The other thing this shows is we have a deteriorating water clarity trend. So going back to 1984 to today, the lake is getting slightly less clear. It's a pretty small trend, but it is statistically significant. And so we have some theories on why that's happening. And that's part of our overall water quality efforts to track that and try to turn that trend around. So this is the lake scorecard, I'm just going to leave it at that. There's a lot of other great information in here. I'd be happy to talk to folks more about this after the meeting. So really, the big picture, you know, we have the stable total phosphorus, as well as chlorophyll A, which is a measure of biological productivity, trends in the lake. And our secu, our water clarity trend is deteriorating. 2020, we had a relatively normal phosphorus concentration in the lake. After two years, it's above average concentrations, probably related to both reduced precipitation in 2020 and good land use management practices. We have a bit of a ways to go for the main lake to meet our, to meet our target. And one of the indicators that folks always ask about for water quality is how are we doing on blue-green algae or cyanobacteria blooms? 2020 was a quiet year, there was only one high alert bloom. We've had two reported high alert blooms this summer so far through the cyanobacteria tracker. One was August 20th, so we did just have a bloom on the lake two days ago. But this, the trend we're seeing so far this summer is below what we saw prior to 2020. Hopefully, that's a sign that we're beginning to turn the corner on some of our water quality efforts. South Bay is a bit of a different story. We have already, we're already at the targeted total phosphorus concentration for South Bay, so that's the good news. But there are some deteriorating water quality nutrient response conditions in South Bay as well, so we're keeping an eye on those. Go ahead, Ben. So yeah, this just shows our TMVL targets. For the future, we want to continue our in-lake monitoring efforts. I think the exciting thing here is we're trying to train more cyanobacteria monitors and more Vermont invasive species monitors so we get better information. If anyone's interested in doing that, also see me after the meeting. But we want more data, we want more information from the public to help us better understand what's happening in the lake. And finally, folks may have read about there's a new Memphremagog Monitoring Observatory in Quebec. They're putting out high-frequency monitoring buoys in the lake on the Quebec side of the border to get real-time data collected every 15 minutes or so. And we just begin to think about, can we do that on the Vermont side of the border as well? That costs money, so we need to see if we can find that funding source. And then last point, this is something that Ben and the Natural Resources Conservation District for Orleans County are more involved in, but we're also doing tributary monitoring principally for phosphorus to see what's coming into the bay. And we want to eventually do some modeling to estimate loads. And that'll help us understand which of the catchments might be the bigger sources of phosphorus, and we can focus our land use management and phosphorus reduction best management practices on those areas. So I think I'll leave it at that. In the interest of time, the tributary sampling is around on five rivers on the Vermont side of the border, and there's some similar efforts happening in Quebec as well. So Ben, I think that's all we have. Thanks, everyone, for your attention, and we'll move along with the agenda. So should I introduce the next speaker? So Pete Emerson from the Department of Fish and Wildlife will be speaking about the malignant melanoma's in the Brown Bullhead. Am I supposed to touch it?
I'm a Scots guy, this is great. Hi, I'm Pete Emerson, I'm a fish biologist out of the St. Johnsbury District. Myself and Judd Kratz are managers for the water, pretty much the Northeast Kingdom and a little further south into the Wells River drainage. So clearly, we have been involved with the Brown Bullhead melanoma, which has been observed in Lake Memphremagog since 2012, when we were first receiving reports from anglers out on the lake, in South Bay in particular. The Brown Bullhead melanoma have been observed all the way up into Quebec. We've seen them in the city of Magog on the beach, and we've seen them all through South Bay and the rivers. Is that better? That's rare that I'm asked to be louder, so that's great. So first reports of Brown Bullhead melanoma in the lake, 2012. The Department of Fish and Wildlife does annual sampling at multiple sites across the lake. South Bay, Hospital Cove, some of you know that as Scots Cove, and at the Twins, where we do bass sampling around the islands closer to the border. So we have a good sense of what the fishery is here in Vermont, and we partner with the, our partners in fisheries in Quebec with the ministry. And they're finding the same thing, we're seeing Brown Bullhead all the way up the lake with melanoma. In 2013 and 2014, we started paying attention to the bullhead proportions. We started looking at individual fish as we handled them. We've handled several thousand fish. And we're looking at proportions that vary from year to year, but generally are running in about 30% of the fish that we handle do have the melanoma showing on them. So it was pretty disturbing for us. In 2015, we went out to partners with the U.S. Geological Survey at the Lees Town Science Center and brought some real pros in to look closer at the lesions. They were the ones that confirmed it was melanoma, and we've been partnering with them ever since. We were curious if we could solve this by looking at the, some of the contaminant history that we might have a sense of what might be existing here in the lake. So we collected a lot of fish of three species from Lake Memphremagog. We were looking at yellow perch, we were looking at bass, and we were looking at the bullhead. And we were looking at 60 different analytes that were recommended in a standard EPA practice when you look at fish with contaminant concerns. Following that investigation, which took place in 2017 and 2018, and was paired with sediment samples and water quality samples, looking at those same analytes. We did not find anything that was a smoking gun. We didn't look at anything that made us feel that we need to put consumption advisories out there. The bullhead did not appear to be suffering from high doses of any of the contaminants that we were concerned with. But that didn't solve the problem. We still have fish with melanoma tumors in the lake. And as a fish biologist, I'm very interested in solving that problem and seeing if we can do something to help the fish, or at least know what it is that the fish are suffering from. So this year, we have made a proposal using some partnerships with the UVM Medical Center and some folks that are very well versed in genetics research for cancer, along with our partners at the USGS, Vicky Blazer, who reported the melanoma in the first place. And we are now waiting to receive funding so that we can do a much broader investigation, looking not simply at contaminants, but at the whole spectrum of problems that might be leading to these melanoma. So a much more thorough study, a much more in-depth study, and likely to take a little more time. So that is all I have to report for now, but I'll take questions later. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah. So Rick is next, and Rick is not here.
He's going to be on what?
Rick is going to be on the big screen. Up next is Rick Levy from the Department of Environmental Conservation. And Rick has been helping a lot with this bullhead melanoma, in addition to a lot of other things, which you'll hear about now.
Rick, do you want to share your screen, or would you like me to put your presentation?
Hi, Oliver, I'll share. We'll see if that works. That way I could toggle around.
Great.
Is it showing up?
Not yet, but now it's, we got you, you have to see the boat.
Beautiful, that's just something for everybody to look at while they listen a little bit about some of the PFAS monitoring that we're doing. So could everybody hear me okay? Welcome. Nice to be sharing some of our results with all the interested stakeholders here today. So Vermont D E C Watershed Management Division, in cooperation with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, initiated a multi-year monitoring project in 2021 to monitor for the presence of PFOS compounds in fish tissue and surface waters in lakes and rivers throughout Vermont. So these sampling efforts will help develop a baseline of PFOS contamination within the state and help identify action areas and provide the necessary data for appropriate response. The Lake Memphremagog comprehensive PFOS surface water and fish tissue sampling is part of this statewide monitoring effort. On July 20th of this year, Vermont D E C conducted the first of three sampling events to assess PFOS concentrations in surface waters and fish tissue in Lake Memphremagog and the major tributaries on the Vermont side. Surface water samples from 10 sites within the watershed. Well, surface water samples from 10 sites within the watershed were collected and sent to a U.S. laboratory for analysis of 36 PFOS, including the five regulated PFOS in Vermont. laboratory for analysis of 36 PFOS, including the five regulated PFOS in Vermont. When we're sampling for PFOS, the detection limits are down in the single part per trillion. So PFOS is very ubiquitous. It's in the environment. It's in sunscreens. It's in clothing. It's in atmospheric deposition. So the quality control that's needed when collecting these samples is very high. We use a stainless steel dipper and collect the samples from approximately a foot below the surface. The sites that were sampled in Lake Memphormagog were three sites on the Main Lake, one up by the U.S.-Canada border. And we also partnered and collaborated with Julie Grenier and her team with CoGeF. And part of this sampling collaboration was to split duplicate samples and have our U.S. laboratory and then their Canadian laboratory do the analysis for the PFOS to basically do inter-laboratory comparisons and quality control to see if we can share data back and forth. So the three main lake sites were the U.S.-Canada border, where duplicate samples were shared, a mid-lake station, number two, station number three, a southern lake station, and then the Johns River was the northernmost tributary. And then at the lower part of the map, where it gets a little bit busy, we had two sites on the Clyde River, one at the mouth and one above the Newport wastewater treatment facility. Then we had a site, two sites on the Black River, one at the mouth and one further upstream above the Coventry landfill, and another one on the Barton River, as well as a site on South Bay. So that was fairly comprehensive sites for the Vermont side. Julie's team sampled, I know at least three sites shown here in this map. The sites that we shared duplicate samples were the U.S.-Canada Main Lake site, as well as we also sampled the Newport wastewater treatment facility effluent. The preliminary results are out in a report. This is one sampling event of three on Lake Memphormagog. The second one, the first one was on July 20th. The second sampling event was on August 20th. The last one will be the middle of September. And we also collected fish tissue samples from four sites, two on the Main Lake, one on the Clyde River, and one in South Bay. The good news is, of the 36 PFOS that we analyzed for at the U.S. lab, there were only detections of two PFOS, one at the Midlake Site 2 Site, Midlake Site, for PFOS at a concentration of 2.8 parts per trillion, and one at the mouth of the Johns River for PFBA at just above 2 parts per trillion. These are very low concentrations, and they're actually concentrations consistent with what you would find even in very remote areas around the world because of atmospheric deposition. Many of these are very ubiquitous. The results from the effluent at the Newport wastewater facility were also very low. In fact, for the five regulated Vermont PFOS, the sum of the five was only 22 parts per trillion. The report includes inter-laboratory comparisons. Our quality control that was done with duplicate samples, field samples, equipment blanks, as well as other laboratory quality controls were all looking very excellent, and we're really pleased with this first round of sampling results back for this PFOS sampling in Lake Memphormagog. And I see I'm over my, so I'll be around for questions at the end of the presentations. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And just a quick reminder for folks that are joining us on Teams, if you would like to sign up to make a comment, please do so in the chat, just to indicate that you'd like to make a comment when we do get to that portion of the meeting. And for folks, I'm Keith LaPla. I'm Director of the Watershed Management Division at Vermont D E C. Several of the folks here tonight are also working within the division, the Lakes and Ponds Program, Rick in the Monitoring and Assessment Program. And then I'm here to talk a little bit about the pre-treatment permit and a little bit about the timeline for that. As you all realize, the pre-treatment permit is not yet out on draft, but I wanted to talk about the process. So folks are aware generally that the Coventry landfill has applied for a pre-treatment permit. So this is a permit. This is a federal permit that in Vermont, we're a delegated authority. So we manage the federal NPDS or the Federal Permitting Program for both direct discharges, like from the Newport wastewater treatment facility, but also pre-treatment discharges that go into those facilities. Certain different industrial types require those pre-treatment permits. The landfill is one of those. So we had hoped to have that permit out by the time this meeting occurred. Right now, our schedule is mid-September. We will have that permit out, and the process will be, we'll release that permit on a 30-day public notice period. So we'll put it out on public notice. We'll notify folks that that permit is out. It will be out for 30 days, during which time we'll do two things. We'll accept written public comment during that 30-day period, and we'll also have a public meeting, similar to this meeting up here in Newport, where we'll welcome folks in to make comments specific to that pre-treatment permit. We're still working on some of the details of that permit internally, but I can tell you a few of the details tonight, that we are really three different areas that we're focusing on in that permit that will help provide some context for the permit when it does come out on draft. First of all, and probably of greatest interest, is the permit authorizes, it requires treatment of the leachate, and then it also, secondly and differently, authorizes delivery of that leachate to certain wastewater treatment facilities. We're going to continue the moratorium on discharging of that leachate to the Newport facility. The Newport facility, the Newport wastewater treatment facility will not be on that list of approved facilities to receive leachate as a result of the pre-treatment permit. So that will be one important leg. But really, what we're focusing on with the pre-treatment permit is treatment. And so we are requiring that Casella develop, within the first four months, a plan to pilot technology to remove PFOSes from the leachate and to submit that plan to us for review. We've set a standard in that permit by which they need to, they'll need to devise the pilot program to meet, and we're going to collect a bunch of data about that. We'll approve the pilot plan after reviewing it and potentially modifying it. That pilot will then be put in place, and we want to see that system operate for at least two full seasons. There'll be a requirement by the third year that they produce a report, a comprehensive report on the efficacy of the removals across different seasons, working in real time at treating the leachate, and then also looking at the economics of that, looking at all different factors associated with the treatment of that leachate. And then really, the third major leg of that pre-treatment permit is going to be monitoring. It's going to be characterizing the nature of the effluent, and then also the removal efficiencies of the effluent as it passes through approved wastewater treatment facilities and discharges out of those approved wastewater treatment facilities for some of the more conventional pollutants. So really, those are the three key elements that you'll see in that in much more detail, in quite a bit of detail, as that pre-treatment permit comes out for public comment and review. But I wanted to at least give you tonight that sort of preview as to what to be looking for if you look for those three different elements. So again, the continuation of the moratorium here in Newport, the pilot study and all of the different requirements around that pilot study, and then thirdly, the monitoring and characterization of the effluent, the efficacy of wastewater treatment for that effluent, and then downstream receiving water monitoring. So that's the process and the rough timeline on what we're doing with the pre-treatment permit. And again, we're going to open this up for comments at the end, questions at the end, and happy to talk more about that at that time. But now, in the agenda, we have an opportunity for three different watershed associations that would like to talk, provide a statement. And Oliver, who's up first?
I believe it's, Don't Undermine Memphormagog's Purity is up first.
All right. So Dump is up first, and please come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Sure.
I forgot my glasses. I'm not used to wearing them. Thank you. Hello, and thank you, Secretary Moore, for sponsoring this community forum and listening to our shared concerns for the future of Lake Memphormagog. My name is Henry Ko, and I am a member of a voluntary citizens' environmental group, Dump: Don't Undermine Memphormagog's Purity, whose members include many Quebec neighbors and allies unable to cross the border and to attend in person. The words may be mine, but the ideas are from your neighbors. Among these, we are honored with that Robert Benoit, President of Memphormagog Conservation Incorporated, will share in this program. Robert is a founding member of Dump and has collaborated with us for three years in fighting for protections of our shared international lake. We welcome Vermonters and Quebecers alike who care and are concerned about the environmental threats to Lake Memphormagog. We thank the A and R Secretary and the staff for your interest. Newport is the Geneva of North America. I was fortunate 50 years ago to hear these words spoken to the Newport City Council by a European-American, Hans Klender, who had come to Newport as a city planning specialist. I have never been to Switzerland, but I have remembered the image he described of two cities taking advantage of their parallel natural settings on their respective international lakes. At the end of a most interesting evening, Dr. Charles Sherman Jr., Mayor of Newport, quietly said, "Perhaps it is time we turn our city around and begin to face the lake." This building is a testament. Much has happened over the years. Much of it is positive, continues to happen. Our challenge today is to ask, what will Lake Memphormagog be in another 50 years? Unfortunately, the most important stakeholders to the future of our lake are not here tonight or today. They are our grandchildren and their grandchildren. We must think of them. Just as an aside, and this isn't part of my prepared remarks, we were heartened to hear that the moratorium will be extended. This was news to us out of the Canadian press this morning. And we did not come today to debate the pilot project that Mr. Peter LaPla is just introduced. That will come later, and we intend to be present. What brings us here today? The Vermont Agency of Natural Resources labeled Lake Memphormagog as impaired and degraded. Although the A and R Secretary chose not to designate Memphormagog as a lake in crisis as petitioned by 3,900 citizens, we are appreciative in that she and her staff have come to Newport prepared to discuss and implement a Dump-initiated Response Plan and other actions. I should read what Peggy Stevens, a Dump member, wrote in The Chronicle last week. Quote, "The purpose of the lake in crisis petition was to bring attention and resources to protect the lake and to defend it against environmental contamination evident in the cancerous brown bullhead found in the lake and nowhere else in Vermont. There is no disputing the risk to the environment, the public health, or our local economy caused by sick fish, blue-green algae blooms, and measurable levels of toxic PFAS chemicals found recently in Sherbrooke's drinking water supply earlier this year." The A and R has begun testing fish and water for PFAS. That's a good start. More must be done to develop a plan to protect the lake. The sources of the contaminants causing these serious problems must be pinpointed and effectively dealt with to prevent future damage to water quality. Households, commercial businesses, and industry all contribute hundreds of harmful chemicals, as does landfill leachate. Lake Memphormagog is distinct from all other Vermont lakes. Fact: It serves as a drinking water source for 175,000 Canadians. You know, many students at Lake Region and even at North Country don't know this fact. Fact: 25% to 40% of brown bullhead fish in South Bay and Hospital Cove present with malignant tumors, I'm sorry, cancers, on the flesh and in their organs. This is extremely rare and is linked to contaminated waters," which is a quote from Dr. Blazer of USGS. Fact: It is home to Vermont's only remaining and permitted private landfill. Most of Vermont's waste ends up in Coventry. An increasing proportion, over 20%, comes from out of state. The landfill produces the equivalent of five to six semi-tanker truckloads per day of toxic leachate, otherwise known as garbage juice. Over a 10-year period, between 36 million and 40 million gallons of toxic leachate were delivered to the Newport wastewater treatment plant. And it's our understanding that such municipal plants are designed to treat domestic sewage, not remove toxic chemicals such as PFAS. The contaminated treatment plant effluent was dumped into the Clyde River, a short distance from the lake. That's 36 to 40 million tons in a nine-year period. A and R and Casella maintain that it cannot be proved that toxic landfill leachate is the cause of sick fish. But we ask, can it be proven not to be the cause in the absence of adequate studies? The short answer is no. Eve Crunden, writing in Waste Magazine in 2020, states that landfill leachate, quote, "is an exposure pathway for high concentrations of PFAS, which are harmful to the environment and bioaccumulated biota and in the food chain." In Dump's view, filtration and treatment options for PFAS and other chemicals are too important to society to be left to the private waste industry. I'll repeat that. This is a fundamental principle in which we believe. In Dump's view, filtration and treatment options for PFAS and other chemicals are too important to society to be left to the private waste industry alone. Three years ago, area citizens, three years ago, area citizens and written comments overwhelmingly opposed the 51-acre landfill expansion and formed Dump. When learning of PFAS concentration is six times over the Vermont safe standard per year, in groundwater sample well between the landfill and the Black River, Dump acted to appeal the A and R decision to permit the expansion. While the Environmental Court and the Active 50 Board did uphold the permit to expand, they did so with important conditions, among them that a moratorium or ban was placed on treatment of landfill leachate anywhere in the Memphormagog watershed. The mediation states no leachate treatment at the Newport plant for four years or until January 1, 2024. We're glad tonight that the agency has seen fit to extend that moratorium. In Dump's view, this is an environmental accident waiting to happen. Factors to consider included liner leakage to groundwater, stormwater runoff from Vermont's largest continuous impermeable surface, 129 acres, as well as uncaptured methane releases to the atmosphere. The Casella Company has a history of operation and management violations, the latest being the 154,000-gallon leachate spill at their nearby Bethlehem, New Hampshire landfill, spilling toxins into the Ammanusic River. A similar spill in Coventry would be an international environmental disaster. We respectfully call on A and R to end Vermont's dependence on a single landfill distant from population centers. There are alternative sites. The time has come for the state to revive its mandate to develop a comprehensive solid waste plan based on zero-waste principles and on regional depositaries closer to Vermont's population centers. Do not grant automatic 10-year renewal permits. Let 2018 be the last expansion of the Coventry landfill. Augment liability and guarantees and bonds in event of accidents and the final closure. Treatment of landfill leachate is too important a public function to allow it to be planned and run by a private or private corporation. Treatment of landfill leachate is too important a public function to allow it to be planned and run by a private or private corporation. The Northeast Kingdom, already Vermont's sacrifice zone, is becoming known as Vermont's and New England's dumping ground. Let the rest of Vermont share the burden. Landfill leachate must be treated elsewhere. No leachate ever in the Memphamagog watershed. This is our prime objective. It is the Canadians' prime objective. We ask you to listen. You have been patient. Just a few closing, more philosophical remarks. In our monthly meetings of Dump volunteers, we have discussed some abiding and positive guidelines. One, the precautionary principle. This principle is enshrined in law in many nations, but not in, not so in the U.S. It says that when scientific evidence is uncertain about an environmental or human health hazard, then no action should be taken until it is demonstrated there is no harmful effect. Two, act as respectful neighbor. With three-quarters of the northerly flowing Memphamagog watershed in Vermont, yet eighty percent of the lake's geography in Canada, we have a high obligation to our northern neighbors to care for this fragile, most important resource. To allow northerly flowing waters to be polluted by Vermont actions and inaction is thus, is not just unneighborly. It is irresponsible. It is immoral. The need to, three, the need to protect the lake in order to improve the lake. We must first do no harm to our surface and groundwater resources. Clean water is life. Do everything to protect it. Apathy is the friend of environmental injustice. Four, no treatment of landfill leachate in the Memphamagog watershed ever. Five. Five, cherish this lake. Three words imprinted in granite on a bench facing the lake in Palmero Park, just three hundred mi- uh, three hundred yards from here. Have you sat on it to contemplate the lake's beauty? In the words of former Newport Mayor Charlie Prado, quote, "Hold this lake dear. Be thankful, be thankful that we have such a wonderful resource in our area and fight as you would for a loved one, never to do anything to harm it." And Memphamagog is the lifeblood of our border area. We should always treat it as such. I'll, I'll end by just saying, we encourage all to keep these guidelines in mind as we work to protect and improve our lake for future generations. Thank you. And I'll turn the program over to our colleague Robert Benoit.
Mes bons amis du Vermont, est-ce qu'on m'entend au Vermont? Est-ce que je dois commencer à parler? Est-ce qu'on m'entend? Robert? Yeah, tu peux commencer. On vous entend très bien. Allez-y. On sait. So, mais au Vermont, I wish I was in Newport. Good day, Secretary Moore, and thank you for this opportunity to present our perspective as Canadian citizen who share this international lake with you. Also, a special thank to Mr. Peter Laflamme, a real gentleman, like Henri Coe. My name is Robert Benoit, and I'm here today representing Memphamagog Conservation, Inc. As you know, we in Quebec have every reason to be very concerned about contamination of our lake and the need to protect the lake now and in the future. The fact that a hundred and seventy-five thousand Quebecer residents get their drinking water from the lake raises our concern about toxic contamination to the highest level. Any contaminant entering the lake in the U.S. watershed may end up in the Sherbrooke Magog water supply. How long may I say, Mr. Secretary Moore, that not only it is morally, morally wrong for individuals to pollute, to pollute a good neighbor, but it is wrong for a group of people to al- to allow it to happen. A drop of water from Newport or leachate for Coventry will travel north for two years in the lake before reaching Magog River. Any chemical contaminant in that drop of water will make quite damage all along the journey of seven hundred days. Damage to the fish, damage to the water, damage to the sediment, damage to the beach, damage to the ecosystem, and at the end of the journey, damage to the health of a hundred and seventy-five Canadians who drank that water. One look at a cancerous bullhead fish tells us something is terribly wrong in Black River and in the lake. The cause of this cancer has been tied to environmental contamination by Madame Dr. Blazer, who conducted a fantastic study and by other researcher. As a, as a citizen, what do you do when you read in the morning paper that PFAS was discovered in Sherbrooke and Magog, drinking water, drinking water earlier this year at thirteen part per trillion, while leading scientists agree that the safest highest limit is one part per trillion? Research show without a doubt that leachate, even if small amount, contaminate ground and surface water. Some would like to blame Quebec for PFAS present on Lake Memphamagog. This is simply not the case. For example, wastewater treatment plant in Quebec contribute for only one-third of the daily discharge in the lake. The rest come from the Fort Water, Water Treatment Plant in the U.S. processing over two million gallons of wastewater every day. In Quebec, only residential, small commercial, and very small industrial wastewater discharge enter this plan. We in Quebec closed our garbage dump in nineteen and two thousand and ten. That landfill leachate entered the lake from Quebec site of the border, then entered the, the lake from the Quebec site since nineteen ninety-seven. Thanks to Henri Coe and his team of Dump, we were successful in gaining a moratorium on the discharge of leachate from wastewater treatment plant in Lake Memphamagog with the Casella Company until two thousand and twenty-three. The treat will not disappear after that day. Thank you. Thank you to postpone the, to the moratorium two thousand, two thousand and twenty-six. And I'm sure we will have another meeting in two thousand, two thousand and twenty-six about that matter. No leachate should be treated or disposed into Lake Memphamagog or anywhere in its watershed ever again. Why? Because there is bioaccumulation. It's a quiet monster. It starts slowly and go from bad to worse in your body. And when you get sick, my friend, it is too late. You may try to sue the company or try to sue the wastewater, the wa- the wast- the wastewater treatment plant or your municipality. I wish you good luck in your battle. Because nobody, nobody will be held accountable for killing you slowly with this chemical. Remember the DDT, the tobacco industry, the Bhopal disaster in India, two thousand people died. The Flint water crisis in the United States. The Walgreens tragedy, tragedy in Canada. And I can go on and on all day. Let's hope that the precautionary principle had a place on a so-called evolved society. In nineteen oh nine, the Boundary Water Treaty was signed between the two countries, prohibiting either one from contaminating the water of the other. Canada and the United States mutually agreed not to pollute water if it could hurt people, people or property on the other country. That agreement is still in place and must be honored here and now. In the law of the land in Canada, polluter and pollution have no acquired right. Talking about the law of the land, Mrs. Secretary Moore, you mentioned on Burlington TV station recently that the decision of Coventry will be made in the United States by Americans. Of course, we Canadians respect that. But I'd like to remind you of three important actions were taken by all different level of government in the last few months, and great number of these politicians are on the line at this point. The first one, from the working table of elected representative from the federal, the provincial, the regional, and municipal government. It's quite a job to get all of them sitting on one table. A statement was sent to you, Mrs. Moore, who said no leachate should be treated or disposed into Memphamagog or anywhere in its watershed ever again. The second one was the letters from Benoit Charret, Quebec Minister of Environment. A letter sent to you asking the moratorium on the treatment of leachate be continued. The last one, but not the least, not the least. The National Assembly of Quebec of June the third, a motion was adopted unanimously by the Prime Minister, all the minister, and all the hundred and elected, elected member at the effect that no leachate should be treated or disposed into Memphamagog or anywhere in its watershed again. Water is life and cannot be replaced. Our voice must be heard, Mrs. Secretary Moore and gouvernance cup. I will be closing by saying, we know your job, Mrs. Moore, is not and will not be easy in the coming weeks and months. Stop between the state of Vermont and Quebec, between Casella and Coventry, between Newport City and the lake, and the lake, between the leachate and the lake and the health of the citizen. But as John F. Kennedy said in September nineteen sixty-two, we do these things not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Mrs. Secretary Moore, we Canadians trust you and you to, and hope you make the best call for all party. We at MCI respect the people who were here before us. We listen to the leader who are there now, and we dream of the people will be there after us. Mrs. Secretary Moore, friend, neighbor, thank you very much. Et merci.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, next, I'd like to invite forward a representative of the Memphamagog Watershed Association to also offer some remarks.
My name is Stan Schaub. I'm on the board of the Memphamagog Watershed Association. Um, first of all, we'd like to thank the state of Vermont for holding this event. Uh, we're uh appreciate the state's research concerning the Memphamagog, and MWA intends to continue assisting in these endeavors as we can. Uh, MWA also likes to thank all the partners with whom we've had the privilege of working. Uh, these partners include the federal, the state, the uh uh, local governments, international partners, nonprofits, businesses, and other lake associations. Without these partnerships, much needed work could not have proceeded in the last few years. And without these partnerships, uh, without these collaborations, uh, we, well, with this collaboration, we can ensure the, the sustainability of our local government environment and current and future generations of the U.S. and Canadian residents living in the Memphamagog watershed. Like everyone else here, MWA is interested in issues that impact the lake. However, however, we also have been addressing issues in the watershed as a whole for the past fourteen years. Could we share the next slide? Um, MWA's work is made possible by an active board of directors, and I'm actually totally amazed all the time at how much work we get done with just volunteers. Um, we occasionally, from time to time, have funding from grants that we do have paid staff. But for the most part, it is a passionate group of volunteers. Uh, we're funded through memberships, donations, and grants. Our vision is a future where the Lake Memphamagog watershed is ecologically healthy and communities are engaged in resource stewardship for the protection, resiliency, and enjoyment of this significantly large drainage area. To accomplish this goal, MWA has worked on five strategic plans. The first one being a shoreline restoration. We just finished a, a big one that we've worked on with the city of Newport, right here across the way in uh, Proudie Beach. Uh, actually, we've been working with the shoreline protection for many years with Proudie, but recently we were able to uh sponsor the uh, the installation of a pollination garden and also a rain garden, along with the uh, the uh, new bike trail. It's, it's really very impressive. Um, we also have the lakewide assessments that we work with. That's where we have a member trained in lakewise assessing and works with local shoreline residents and those folks that want to improve their and restore their shoreline with vegetation, the proper vegetation. So those are two programs we have going on that we work with. Could we have the next slide, please? Stormwater mitigation. We've got two really huge projects going on as far as, I'm sorry, as far as being arranged with volunteers. Um, and that's mitigation right here, actually, right up the road here a little bit, where we have about a hundred and seven acres of water draining down into the lake, into a small area, and uh, you know, bringing the silt down with it. Anyhow, we've got a, we've just finished a design project for that area. And also another design project where we have a lot of silt coming into the lake right over here by the marina. Uh, so I think our next stage in that is the implementation. But I'm really proud of what, what our organization has done in that respect. We also have some smaller projects going on where we have rain gardens that we've actually restored along the Clyde River. Uh, we were working in the, the farmers market selling rain barrels. And we have other areas where we've been doing some buffer planting. Let's see here. I think we're ready for the next slide. Aquatic invasive species. We have different, as you can see here, uh, different parts of our organization that are working with invasive species. We are actually working with MCI right now, the, the Canadian side, with monitoring the zebra mussels. Where we have twenty traps along some of our uh, um, docks, along with what they're doing on their, their side to monitor how the zebra mussels are moving in. Um, we also work, one of our members is working with the, the state in regards to milfoil uh, reduction at the uh, not Bullside, but the um, uh, I can't think of what the name is right now. Anyhow, in Newport Town, they're working with Newport Town, I can't, I can't think of right now. It's up by the Strawberry Acres, Strawberry Acres, right? Um, yeah, and let's see, we have patrollers looking for any invasives that might be coming into the lake and reporting to the state. And uh, we just had a huge party, so to speak, with eradicating fragnattes right over here by the Proudie Beach. There's about a hundred feet that, and that was another collaboration with Columbia Forest Products. We had the Land Trust, we had Northwood Stewardship also working there with us um, to clear out as best we can to manage the hundred, a hundred feet of fragnattes. Let's see. Riparian and wetline restoration, very excited about this too. Uh, just with this last year, we were able to get grants so that we could hire a project manager. And he's been doing a fantastic job this last month, walking along the Johns River, uh, mapping the Johns River, identifying where there needs to be restoration, other areas where it's looking okay. But he's working with, uh, he's working on lands of Blomsted State, uh, the access, and of course, private landowners too. So we're really happy about how much he's been able to do in the last few months and working basically with Pete from our Fisheries and Wildlife Department. Okay, I think we're ready for the next slide. Uh, education and events. We really work hard with young people. You know, Henry mentioned in his presentation that uh, high school kids don't really know, gee, we have Canadians that are drinking, drinking the water from the lake. I would say most adults in our area don't know that. But one thing we've been working with, with youth is to is to really emphasize with them that we have an international border that we're living on and that we have our Canadian neighbors and our Canadian neighbors do drink the water from the lake. So that's something we really want to emphasize with the kids. We've been working mostly with third graders for the last few years, probably about five years now, except for the COVID year, where we meet with third graders in Proudy Beach. We invite any of the third graders at the local schools in our watershed to come and spend a day learning about what is a watershed. We learn about the four rivers that feed into the watershed of Memphremagog. We've also been emphasizing recently the riparian zone and historically how Vermont has used, how they use the riparian zone around the rivers in the last couple centuries. But also now what we can do to restore what we've done to the riparian zone. So we've been real happy about some of the activities we've come up with the kids. We're also just now reaching out with the Rubenstein Institute in Vermont with the Echo, or in Burlington, I should say, Vermont. Why does Burlington seem like it's different than this part of the world, I think? But anyhow, we reached out to Burlington there, Burlington, Vermont, and Rubenstein Institute, and they've really been helping us with coming up with ideas of how we can use the boat, which is sitting right out here, for research with using, and we really intend to, actually, we're going to meet some, September 15th, we're doing our first ride with students from Coventry and seeing how we can use the boat. Mayor Pat. Oh, I thought you, okay, great. Okay, and of course, we have our river paddles, our nature hikes, workshops that we have going on. Our last general membership meeting, we talked about, well, the one coming up, we're going to be talking about PFAS, we're asking people to come talk on a panel about PFAS. Let's see, I think we probably should go on to, oh, I should mention, we do offer scholarships to our local high school kids that are pursuing an interest in the water quality. And again, here we got the water quality. That's another part of our emphasis is monitoring cyanobacteria. As mentioned, Chuck Golding is one of our lab monitors and we've done river cleanups. We could move on. I think to wrap up, we just wanted to leave you with these three statements right here. One, MWA supports the current leche moratorium at the Newport, at the wastewater treatment plant and will continue to follow the evolving leche technology and provide the community with information. MWA encourages the state of Vermont to explore the sighting of a new landfill outside of the Memphremagog watershed, starting now, since the permitting of a new landfill is a long and arduous process. MWA encourages each individual to take personal responsibility for the generation of waste in their households. Education outreach regarding waste reduction can be carried out on many different levels, but each one of us can make an effort to reduce and reuse and follow other waste reduction guidance given from the state. So if we can leave you with those three statements, we'll turn it back to the panel.
Tiana? You want to come?
Sure.
So as folks can see on the program, we have one more speaker. It's Mr. Gilles Belanger, who's a Member of Parliament in Quebec from Orford. So I'm going to try to finagle this so that Gilles is on the screen. Gilles, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Oliver. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can't see you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to mute, I'm going to mute everyone.
You can't see me?
Here, hi there. Here we go.
I'm on, the camera is on.
Okay.
Okay, I can, I can start. Gilles Belanger, Member of National Assembly of Quebec, Parliamentary Secretary to the Prime Minister and I'm also representing Orford County. Thank you, Julie, for the invitation. Thank you for, thank you, A and R. I'm glad to see the presence of municipal representatives, dump, MCI, MWA members and also citizens from Lake Memphremagog watershed. First thing I want to say is, really missing the time where I had dinner and lunch in Newport or by boat or even toured the lake with my road bikes, really missing. And I hope in soon we'll be able to spend time, I'll be able to spend time with my friends and family in Newport. It's a great pleasure to join you this evening as a delegate of the Table de Concertation des Élu du lac Memphremagog, representing municipal, provincial and federal representatives from Memphremagog and Sherbrooke area. Lake Memphremagog has been, over the last two decades, subject of a great collaboration between Vermont and Quebec. The steering committee is a well-established workspace to support this collaboration. Whereas Lake Memphremagog is a natural treasure and a source of drinking water for almost 200,000 citizens in downtown. It is with deep interest and concern that politicians gather to discuss surface and drinking water protection. On March 19, 2021, we adopted a joint statement to recreate our common goal. Protection of Lake Memphremagog is a priority shared by all elected official at all level of government. Moreover, a motion, like my friend Rabat Benoit said, have been adopted and made by National Assembly of Quebec. We were pleased to see this morning in our local media, the A and R extended, that A and R extended the ban until 2026. It's good news. It is well-known as scientifically demonstrated that the presence of contaminants such as PFAS in landfill leche poses risk to human and environmental health. The reject of a treated leche in Lake Memphremagog will always remain a source of concern for us. In the past, Quebec population concern have been heard and considered by A and R and by Environmental Commission Act 250 and we recognize this collaboration. We respect the statement that any request to modify this restriction would need to be supported by science, new technologies and new data that demonstrate the absence of undue risk of the quality of drinking water from Memphremagog Lake. Considering the impact on several hundreds of thousands of Canadian and their next generation, the standard we set for scientific certainly is very, very high. Until then, our position remains to ban leche treatment in the Lake Memphremagog watershed. I'd like to take a minute to highlight jump and MCI volunteer. I remember them several years ago in Coventry and I talk with Rabat Benoit a lot and I'd like to salute your hard work for the past three years. We look forward to continue our collaboration between Quebec and Vermont. It's very important for us and we remain committed to protecting the environment and the water quality of Lake Memphremagog. Thank you very much.
All right. And will you call? Excellent. So thank you for all of those excellent remarks. And now it is an opportunity to hear from community members. First on the list is John Barrows. And I think if you, would you like to come up to the microphone, please? Yep, and I'm going to set a timer for two minutes just because there are quite a few, at least 20 speakers.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is John Barrows and I'm here, like everybody else today, to help restore the lake. We had some terrific news from Mr. Peter Leflam earlier today, a real victory for Lake Memphremagog and that is the extension of the moratorium of leche being poured into Lake Memphremagog. I'd like to direct most of my remarks, since I only got two minutes, about leche. What are the environmental benefits of dumping leche into Lake Memphremagog? I've done some research. I can't find any. I think if we want to restore the lake, we don't take leche, which is garbage juice, which has PFAS and many, many, many other contaminants in it, and put it into the lake, which is the drinking water for 175,000 Quebecers. The plan, I want to do thank the state of Vermont and the Agency of Natural Resources for acknowledging the problem of leche and extending the moratorium. I think that's very important. I think the pilot project is a step in the right direction, but the pilot project doesn't solve the problem. The pilot project will take out four or five known PFAS. It will not take out the hundreds of other PFAS and it will not take out all the other contaminants that's in this leche, this garbage juice, this millions of gallons a year that's produced by the Coventry-Casella landfill. We have a problem on the lake. We're not sure where it came from, but the fish are sick. The fish have cancer. We don't know quite what, it's from contamination. We don't know exactly where it's coming from because there's multiple sources. But the solution is not to pour more contaminants into the lake. The solution is to figure out, figure out what's causing the cancer and stop that pollution. It may be a major cleanup. So I'll finish with the question. You can answer it later if you want. What are the environmental benefits of dumping leche into Lake Memphremagog? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next on the list is Effie Brown. And if folks have just a question that they would like to put to one of the experts, you're welcome to stay in your seat and we can direct it to the panel. And if you would like to make a statement, it would be great if you'd come up to the microphone, particularly since that will allow it to be broadcast to our folks participating remotely. Effie?
I'm back here. If I can hear you, can you hear me all right? I think my voice is.
Are you going to make a statement though, or do you have a question?
I'd like to make a statement.
Then it would be great if you'd come up to the microphone just because otherwise the remote participants won't be able to hear you. Thank you.
You from the Agency of Natural Resources and more specifically from the Department of Environmental Conservation. According to Webster's Dictionary, the definition of conservation is the protection of natural resources. I ask you to do your job and protect our lake. That means add nothing, no leche or any other impurities ever. Thank you.
Next on the list is Peggy Stevens.
Thank you. So it is a question. You'd probably say yes. I want to know if the A and R and the DEC are open to considering, looking at reducing the safe drinking water standard for PFAS, which is at this point 20 parts per trillion for five PFAS chemicals. And I want to say, I know that Vermont has the strictest standard for PFAS right now in the nation and that's great. But that was developed a long time ago and a lot more has been learned about PFAS now. The thousands, thousands of chemicals of PFAS. So the fact that we're addressing five in our drinking water standards is really, a drop in the bucket. So I guess it's my question, as more and more scientific research becomes known, and Robert mentioned, Philippe Banjine from Harvard, he's a scientific researcher, and Linda Bernbaum from the National Institutes of Environmental Health, both say one part per trillion should be the safest standard for PFAS in drinking water, given that it is ubiquitous in the environment. We are exposed in many other ways, not just via drinking water. The fact that 22 parts per trillion of PFAS were identified in leche, I mean, I'm sorry, in the affluent from Newport's wastewater treatment facility recently, that's without considering that leche hasn't been disposed of in almost two years, since 2019 in October. So that's the background PFAS that's entering our wastewater treatment facility right now. I have copies of our dump response plan to protect Lake Memphremagog. We are looking at all of the different point sources of contamination, including PFAS, but not limited. There are hundreds of others of chemicals that are toxic to our genes. They do weird things to our hormones and of course, cause cancer. So I, I, sorry, got the point. There are copies.
Next, we're going to take a statement from one of our remote participants.
Emma.
Emma.
So from, from the group on the virtual meeting, there's a person named Emma who asked if she could make a statement or ask a question. So Emma, the floor is yours if you're still with us.
Hi, everyone. My name is actually Sean. We're just using my friend Emma's Microsoft Teams. I really want to thank everybody for being here and for asking the questions and representing their respective groups. I'm new to Newport. I'm new to the international border. And I just didn't hear clearly in the presentation and was wondering if anybody would be willing to answer the question if it is safe or not to drink the lake water. Well, the tap water, the lake water in Newport. Where I'm new to Newport, I, gathering Newport doesn't collect its drinking water from the lake. But in general, if, if, both the city water in Newport and the lake water, are they safe to drink based off of the PFAS and what we're discussing here?
Sure. I can give you a very high level answer and we can follow up with additional information. But all public water supplies in the state of Vermont are regulated under the Safe Drinking Water Act and required to submit periodic monitoring to the Agency of Natural Resources. All of that data is available through our website and we can make sure that that link is provided to you. I don't know, I'm not sure if there's anyone else on the panel more qualified to answer.
It's a groundwater source that, they're from Wales.
Okay, thank you. So it is a groundwater source that serves the city of Newport as opposed to a surface water supply. So it's being drawn from groundwater here, but still subject to the same requirements of the agency.
All right. We will move on down the list. The next person who requested to speak is Harris Gerson. Glad I didn't bop your name.
So some of you may know me and some of you may not. Those of you who know me, recognize me as the guy with the dog outside or the boat that's sitting out there for the last 30 years. I've been coming up here to this lake region for about 30 years. I'm an out of stater. I've lived in New York all of my life, but I found this community to be my second home. I'm probably pretty close to moving on because I'm expecting to expand my family, expect a grandchild in September. But I hope to be able to come back here someday soon with my grandchild to show them a beautiful place that I remember as clean and beautiful and pristine. So why am I here right now? Well, I sat through your meeting. Well, I sat through your meeting because I think it was important for me to make a statement as somebody that's been an outsider for 30 years. I came here by accident, literally by accident, falling at a J-peak and breaking my shoulder and discovering this lake. Otherwise, I never would have known about it. But once I discovered it, I found that it had a magic, and its people were magical as well. Interesting people, fascinating, family-oriented, good people. Beyond that, I have a background that has never been utilized here, and most people don't even know about it. I am a professor of international management and environmental management. So what's going on here tonight is particularly interesting to me. I directed an international MBA and graduate study program in New York City for close to 10 years, in which I educated probably 1,500 to 2,000 MBA students and graduate students in environmental sciences and international management. Yeah. So what we did was we found that if you find a group of people that were really interested and passionate about something, they would change for the better. And our program evolved around sustainability and environmental sciences from a finance program. And what I'm suggesting here is that if you let the academic communities that surround this city, McGill University, Sherbrooke, the Canadian universities, the University of Vermont, all get involved and let the youth help lead this initiative, you will see change in a positive way. Because the youth will become the leaders and will take ownership as stakeholders in this process. So I'm willing to hang out a little bit longer to help you do that and help bring the academic communities into this whole process, if you're willing to accept me. Okay? Thank you.
Jim Campbell?
I didn't come here tonight intending to say a word, but following you, Harris, isn't easy, because I'm locally local with no MBA. But the few talking points I want to make, especially this group right here, is I'm born and raised here 68 and a half years, and I've fished this lake, I've swam this lake, and we bought property in 1952, 115 acres with a half a mile lake frontage for $7,500. So the reason I'm here tonight is I really observe the lake. I've had a boat on this lake since, for 56 years. And I'm concerned about what's going on here. They're talking about this leachate. I don't know, I'm not a scientist, but I'm very passionate about Lake Memphamagog. And what I've seen, and mostly with the weed growth, and it starts many years ago, about 40 years ago, I was sitting in a forum up here at the municipal building, and they were talking about expanding the sewage treatment plant, which they did. And I asked the engineers on site that night. I said, "Well, you know, I'm really starting to see some weed growth following the current of the lake." And there wasn't anybody on that board that night that could explain it to me. But what I've noticed over the years, it's continued and continued and continued, and it's right where the current goes. So I have some real concerns about that. And to do anything more with that sewage treatment plant, I think would be a huge mistake for the lake. I'm also a little bit passionate, because our home farm on the airport road is part of what is now Cassella. And what puzzles me is how we ever let one company control the waste for the entire state of Vermont. I just can't get that through my head, and I'm not that smart. But I'm struggling. I'm really struggling. And I can tell you, there was supposed to be a landfill, I think it was in Williston. And I give credit to the politicians in the Chittenden County area, because they were able to stop it. They didn't have a problem sending their waste up here to the Northeast Kingdom, along with the prison and other things. But we're not the dumping grounds for the state of Vermont. And we've got to stop allowing it to happen. So if Cassella wants to get rid of this leachate, let them take it to Chittenden County. Today, I came back from Johnson, I met six trucks with NBI on the front. NBI is them hauling trash from all over the state of Vermont. It's not right. We have to stop it. That's a crown jewel. Take a peek at it. There's not a nicer place in the state. Stop this crap and quit polluting this lake.
Jack Sumberg?
So I just wanted to say that I agree that the Agency for Natural Resources should be involved in landfill siting beyond just the permit process. I think the agency should be part of the planning process. It's too important to be left to determine where the solid waste will be deposited in the state. I support the extension of the moratorium. I'm glad that happened. I'm skeptical of the plan to allow Cassella to pretreat leachate, unless there is a robust monitoring regime put in place by A and R to remove all contaminants from that leachate. I think the moratorium should be extended until a proven and regularly monitored pretreatment system to remove all contaminants is put in place. And I would also just like to say, for a few years now, I've had the privilege of keeping a sailboat on this lake. And it is a wonderful place, and it really needs to be protected. Thank you.
We'll take our next question from a virtual participant.
So a participant named Marguerite Edelman asked, "How can we get a copy of the first PFAS survey from Lake Memphamagog that A and R and Coatisaf in Quebec conducted on July 21st?" We've made that document available to MCI, MWA, Dump, and others through email. What I can probably do is post that preliminary report to the Vermont DEC website. We'll put it on, we either put the document or a link to it on the Vermont DC Lakes and Ponds website, hopefully by tomorrow at some point. So if you're interested in seeing the, Rick Levy earlier presented some of the findings from that preliminary PFAS survey from the July sampling event. That'll be up hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow on the Vermont DEC Lakes and Ponds website. We just add that, as Rick said, that's preliminary. We've done the second round of sampling last Friday. Those data should be available, you know, in around two weeks from today. There'll be a third round in September. And sometime in October or November, we'll release a comprehensive report describing the results of the three rounds of PFAS sampling in both lake water, tributaries, fish tissue, and effluent. We can go back to the, there's only, there's probably a handful of questions in the chat, so maybe every third or fourth speaker in here will grab one from the chat.
Next on the list is Pat Seguit.
Mostly, I wanted to raise a comparison. Some years ago, you may remember that the Cabot indirect discharge permit came up for review, and a lot of people had concerns, there were a lot of water issues. And a proposal was made at that time to involve a stakeholder group that worked with Cabot, that jointly together the stakeholders and Cabot selected the labs that did the water quality monitoring. It was an incredibly transparent process. And I believe Cabot learned a lot about a different way of approaching issues that are very contentious, because the water belongs to everybody, it doesn't belong to this business or that business. And I don't know if it was groundbreaking, but I know that, and you were involved. It was, everybody learned a lot. And so I don't know if the pilot project or something in part of the permitting process, but to bring more transparency to this process and to involve, there's a number of groups here that could provide a stakeholder person, but we need more transparency in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Charlie Pronto?
All right. I'll keep you muted two minutes, it's a bit of a project. I can tell you that right, anybody that knows me. Quickly, background, most everybody knows me. I was mayor of Newport 30 years ago. At that time, it was my first introduction to landfill liners, which I fought. I'm on record at your department at that point arguing that the EPA says all liners leak eventually. And I said, "Why the hell are we putting liners on the edge of Lake Memphamagog?" And they said, "Well, we'll have it figured out in 20 years." Well, it's 30 years later, and if you Google "do all liners leak EPA", it'll tell you for 2021, the answer is yes, they do. Eventually. They might not leak today, they may not leak tomorrow, but eventually they're going to leak. So unfortunately, we have a whole bunch of liners over there, and we keep piling garbage on higher and higher. Last year, or two years ago, when I was part of the dump lawsuit against the state of Vermont, we were trying to, we talked about the heights. They allowed another 10 years and 100 feet higher. But every time I drive down Pleasant Street Extension or the Glen Road, my stomach does a flip-flop, makes me sick, is what we're looking at. So there's nothing we can do about that, because we're stuck with it for another 10 years. But there's two things that I want to mention about what's happening tonight. The PFAS study, although I'm happy that you're doing it, it appears that dipping a bucket into the surface water is not probably a real adequate way to find out where the PFOAs are going. Some of them sink. They should be testing sediment. They should be testing the further end of the lake, because that's where the rivers run all the way through. And it's my understanding you stopped basically at the border. So I think you should go a little deeper, part-time. Oh, wow. Okay. Well, two other things. I just can't do it in two minutes. So, and secondly, they said that they put one by the sewer treatment plant. Well, guess what? We're not putting leachate through a sewer treatment plant anymore. So that doesn't matter either. And the other thing is, it's a pretreatment facility. I think the leachate ought to be pretreated. I'm 100% on board with that. But we are, as Mr. Campbell said and a few others, we're the dumping ground. How about we do this somewhere else? How about we take the leachate out of here and everywhere else and put it in Chittenden County? Or would you consider that the pretreatment plant, or the pretreatment facility, not be in Orleans County? We're sick of it. We're done. We don't need any more of this crap. In my lifetime, I hope that I can be celebrating the last time that you give a permit to the dump. 10 years from now, I hope you're saying no. And I hope you're doing your job now to find another place to put this, because we're done with it. We're sick of it.
Paul Lynette?
Mine is more a series of questions. First, I applaud everybody on all the work that everybody's doing. It may not seem like at times from a few years ago, but I do applaud the work that everyone is doing. I applaud the science that's being done to test the water. My question is, are we going to be doing an atmospheric test? Because a lot of studies out in the Midwest and throughout the country have said that PFAS and PFOS falls when it rains, when it snows. I've seen numerous studies over the last month that I've been reading about. And so I'm just curious if friends in the north, the scientists up there and with the A and R, if you're going to be doing atmospheric tests also.
I don't believe that's part of the current...
It's not part of the current? Well, I think it should be. Because with what I've been reading, it's really prevalent in the atmosphere. And that's one thing. Also, when it comes to testing for PFAS and PFOS and all that, have you identified septic systems out along the lake that could potentially be putting PFAS into the lake? Because we all know that everything we use, women's mascara to other things in the house, have PFOS in PFAS. And if our wastewater treatment plant is being singled out of not being scientifically able to treat it, I think we should be testing all the landfills, the septic systems along the entire lake. I think that's a very important thing to be testing. I love the lake, I've grown up in Newport. I'm all for the lake and protecting it. And I guess my final thing is on the fish. Have you done the history of the railroad, of what was dumped in South Bay? Because my father worked on the railroad, and he told me stories of what they used to, the train would go by, and they would just throw the broken kerosene lanterns in the lake and other things. So I'm just wondering if that's maybe attributing to some of the issues with the fish. And so that's all I had to say, was more questions than answers. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just to respond to the question you asked about septic systems, we don't, we're not specifically sampling septic systems as part of the work that's ongoing here. That said, we've done a broader statewide assessment looking at a variety of different sources of potential PFAS contamination, including some sampling of septic to get an idea as to what may be in those. And that is available on the Watershed Management website as well of the Department of Environmental Conservation. Pete, did you want to answer the question about fish?
Yep.
Maybe come up to the microphone, just so folks can hear you. And then Oliver, the next.
So Paul, yes, we are aware of what was going on in South Bay, the railroad. Our preliminary study, which was looking at the 60 analytes as recommended by the EPA, included a deeper dive into what was going on, which resulted in a mitigation of sediments that were taken out of South Bay in 2000, where they removed a lot of the contamination that was done by the railroad for over 100 years. So yes, we were aware, we actually thought we kind of had the cab by the tail with regard to the bullhead melanoma. But as it turns out, they do not seem to carry large concentrations of the PAHs that are prevalent in the South Bay.
So my understanding from Oliver is that there are a couple of folks who have asked in the chat, I think, reiterating a question that was asked in the room here about the environmental benefit of putting leachate in the lake. And I think we probably could all agree, there is no environmental benefit, but rather, this is an environmental reality. Not that it has to go here, but that it has to go somewhere. I'm confident none of you have gone through your day without throwing something away. And the fact of the matter is, we need landfills and we need disposal. I support the comments that were made by the Memphamagog Watershed Association about the need to think about ways to reduce our overall waste footprint and to try to reuse and recycle wherever possible. But at the same time, just the very process of being, we create waste. And it's an unfortunate reality, but a reality. And so I don't want to suggest that there is an environmental benefit. I don't believe any of you think there's an environmental benefit to disposing of leachate. But the fact of the matter is, leachate is a reflection of our lifestyle, and it exists, and we need to look for strategies to treat it, minimize it, and address it. The next question, or next person who signed up on the list was Pam Lads.
Part of what I was going to say actually has just been addressed by you. My name is Pam Lads, I'm a member of Dump. I'm also a member of MWA. I do the VIP patrolling, looking for invasives. My credibility really will depend on which group you ask, unfortunately. So technically, I'm owned by all three of you. There is no benefit to us up here, other than a financial one, which is why Newport has supported discharging leachate into... which is why Newport has supported discharging leachate into the lake. That is a really sad reality. And it would be wonderful if we could recognize that people, water, and the environment is significantly more important than money. It's really sad if we're so desperate for money up here that we're willing to take, continue to take leachate. We were apparently really upset as a city when we stopped taking it because it was a financial loss. We pay taxes. We all pay taxes. But it's really time for somewhere else to take the leachate. Montpelier is taking it now. They seem to be quite happy with that arrangement. But maybe that the site that's being talked about really could go to Chittenden County, to the site that you had in Williston that somehow never got finalized, that somehow Williston managed to get rid of it. It somehow just evaporated, and everything continued to come back here. Reducing, recycling, and not wasting is a great idea. It's a wonderful idea. We all should be doing it. However, if we produce less up here, Casella is a business. I'm not criticizing that. That's a reality. They're a business. They will take more from out of state. They're already talking about taking garbage from other states, from Connecticut, from bringing leachate in from Bethlehem. We don't need it. Take it away. Thank you.
Lyndi Sargent?
Thank you very much for being here. Enjoyed having this forum, and we've really enjoyed meeting new people here. I'm also with Dump. And my concern is a question for you. I'm concerned about the lack of certainty related to removing PFOS from landfill leachate. It's been a conceptual study that Casella thought for Brown and Caldwell, but it's conceptual. What I've read, that this is a huge issue for solid waste management in North America. And the EPA is still calling for research, requests for proposals to be able to study this situation. So Secretary Moore, how concerned are you in the state of Vermont about permitting what would be our country's first experiment in trying to reduce leachate to, or reduce PFOS? Remove them. That's what we need. And if that's not ready yet, because they are accepting these, first round of research proposals was due in 2022, and now a new one is being set out. It's going to be a while. Why should it take place on the banks of an international river? Any thoughts?
So I, that's an excellent question. We put, consider PFAS to be in a category of contaminants of emerging concern. And emerging means just what you're indicating, that we don't have complete knowledge yet. We are certainly learning as we go. I think the state of Vermont, and frankly, New England states in general, are well out in front issues related to these fluorinated compounds. We've been aggressive. They were first discovered in Bennington in 2016 and working to better understand not only what the treatment technologies are to address them, what the sources are, and what the environmental management strategies are. And we're committed to continuing to do that work. As Pete described in his presentation, part of that is going from this conceptual to a pilot scale approach where we can conduct the kind of monitoring we would need to be assured that it's achieving the levels of treatment that are being reported in sort of the trade literature at this point. So this is, there is a significant research component to it. But I think that's true of a lot of areas of our work, that they evolve over time based on the best science available to us. And we know what is needed is to do better and look at strategies that are able to remove PFAS. They're called forever compounds for a reason. Once they're in the environment, it is very difficult to get rid of them. And so we are looking at the best available science and the best available strategies for capturing them and keeping them from getting into the environment. I don't know, Pete, if there's any. Sure, understood.
No, I would just, I would echo what Julie just said and add that, I mean, it's important that we get after treating these and removing these regardless of where they're discharged. And we feel like we have a very good plan in place that you'll see when, you know, the pilot study and the description of the information we're going to gather from installation of this pilot study to move from the theoretical and sort of lab bench scale to a fully operational system working here in Vermont across seasons. Because we think, just like all of you do and all of you have been expressing tonight, it's important to treat and remove these. And we want to do that as soon as possible. You know, we're not waiting for some of the national level research. We feel like a well-designed study that provides that treatment opportunity here is really important. And if done well and monitored well, we're hopeful that we'll get good results from it. I mean, it's not going to add any additional PFOS to the leachate already. It's going to remove them. The question is, how effective will it be? And that's what the study will show us. So we're, you know, committed, pushing forward with treating this leachate.
We're going to go to the virtual participant?
Yeah, there's a question from Paul Knoll and Pete Emerson. Just to perk your ears up. Have the bullhead lesions ever been found in other watersheds or on other fish species?
Which microphone do I talk into now? Yes, bullhead lesions occur in nature. What our concerns were here with Lake Menfromagog was the the percentage of the bullhead that we were seeing was unusual. It was high. And so that's why we're investigating that. Other fish lesions, yes. But other fish cancers, not as common. So across the state, you will find fish that do have various markings on them, infections. And some of them are widespread and benign, and others, like the bullhead here in Lake Menfromagog, are less so. So I guess ultimately, you know, fish illnesses are not unique, but this melanoma is. And when I say unique, I don't mean it's like never existed anywhere else on the planet. It's just this proportion, this percentage, on what we consider a relatively clean lake, it is somewhat unusual.
Martha Sylvester?
Hi, everybody. I'd first of all like to say thank everybody for showing up. It's really good to see everyone showing up. I have a couple of statements and then a couple of questions. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge that I spent 20 minutes with my town administrator today to try to look for the information for this meeting, and he did not have it. So it's disappointing that the town of Coventry couldn't inform their citizens of this meeting. And secondly, I'd like to read that the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation's mission is to preserve, enhance, restore, and conserve Vermont's natural resources and protect human health for the benefit of this and the future generations. I want to state how highly disappointed I am in Secretary Moore for not acknowledging our lake is in crisis. I have been catching fish with my children and now my grandson with tumors on it for years. If that is not an issue, then what are we even doing here? You, your very job is to protect and preserve. I don't see that happening. So I find that very disturbing and very disappointing. Going down, I also have a couple of questions. First of all, who actually manages and runs the state of Vermont's recycling program?
Our solid waste division is responsible for overseeing the implementation of our universal recycling law.
So who actually manages the recycling facilities for our state's recycling? Who operates that?
One is operated by Casella, and one is operated by the Chittenden Solid Waste District.
Thank you. Secondly, I would like to also ask, has the percentages of the lesions and tumors in the fish risen more than 30% since 2012?
No, they've been pretty consistent.
So we're still 30%?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just in brief, in regards to the lake in crisis designation, appreciating that it, that description certainly is as open to a variety of interpretation. The specific statutory authority given to me as the Secretary of Natural Resources is very limited and narrow, and it requires, among other things, a documented reduction in property values. And that simply doesn't exist here. So it's, I don't have discretion. There is a three-part statutory test, and the Lake Menfromagog didn't meet that test.
Anne Chiarello?
Hello. I live here in Newport. I chose to move to Vermont 13 years ago. New Hampshire was an option, but I chose Vermont. Recently, I must say, I have to compliment New Hampshire on being smart enough to say, we don't want the leachate here in Bethlehem, New Hampshire anymore. And I don't know why, when we think leachate's problematic and PFOAs are in it, and that it's hard to get rid of it once you've got it. And Vermont somehow agreed that Casella is able to take all of that leachate and process it here. Now, it's great that we have a moratorium that will last maybe another six years, not to take it in our Newport plan, but it's going somewhere else in Vermont. And I would only ask us to be as wise as the New Hampshire people have been recently in saying, no more leachate here. Thanks.
Thank you. Teresa Garate?
I have a question. Trying to understand, Mr.? I applaud you for taking, you know, probably difficult. And I'm wondering what, how do you come up with a list of compounds that you're going to be removing and what safe level of all of them over a five-year period? And if you get to the end of that five-year period, and there are so many toxic substances that have been discovered in the five years, what's Plan B?
Sure. So just for our virtual participants, the question was, in looking at the pilot treatment of leachate, and I'm going to turn this over to Pete or maybe Casey Catherine, who's on the line, to help answer. But in looking at the pilot, how are we going to identify the pollutants of concern and what happens if we are unable to successfully remove them to levels that are not injurious to public health, correct? Sure. And with a concern that over time, the list of pollutants may grow.
Thanks, Julie. And so the part of the pilot study is going to be characterization of exactly what is in the leachate. So that's going to be part of the study. And so first, you know, doing the testing, doing the testing of the various compounds in the leachate, and then evaluation of the pilot technology that's chosen. Different technologies perform differently on different pollutants. So depending on the final technology that's chosen as actually pilot, then how is that performing across these different pollutants? So that's going to be some of the work that's done in that pilot study. So some, you know, the pollutant of most concern that we're focused on are the PFOSs. So there are certain technologies that are better at PFOSs than other pollutants. But, you know, what are those, what are the various components of the leachate? And then how are those reduced across the technology that is in fact piloted? That's going to be the result, one of the results of the pilot study. Well, there are different scans you can do. Like right now, we, one of the scans for PFOSs, for example, the work that we did out in the lake, the sampling in the lake, there's a particular scan for PFOSs that gives you back 36 different analytes. So 30, so we're looking at 36, even though we regulate five, we're testing for 36. There are different other prior, so-called priority pollutant scans that give you back information on a number of different compounds. So I mean, I guess that's the best way I can answer your question.
Plan B?
I'm sorry. What do you mean, what was Plan B? Well, I mean, that's, I mean, when we get the results of the study back in, that's what we'll do, is we'll review the study, and then we'll decide at that point, is this effective in the pollutants of concern, or do we need to do something different? So, yeah. And I mean, and also, there are certain chemicals that are not reduced by typical secondary wastewater treatment. There are certain chemicals that are. So I mean, the secondary wastewater treatment facility, and then advanced treatment on the tail end of that, that removes phosphorus and other chemicals as a result of coagulation, that those will provide some treatment as well. But again, I mean, you know, we're, this, as the lady that spoke a few moments ago mentioned, this is, you know, we're out on the leading edge of this. I mean, there are landfills across the country, and they all are afflicted with this same problem. And we're taking these steps forward to provide, you know, to do this study and to learn more about it. As Secretary Moore mentioned a few minutes ago, these are chemicals of emerging concern, so we're learning. But where we feel like we've got a well-designed pilot study, you'll be able to take a look at it when that pretreatment permit comes out for public review. We welcome your comments on it, but there are unknowns. I mean, that's, we're learning, and that's the purpose of the pilot. But again, we feel like it's important to start doing this work rather than waiting and continuing to discharge. So.
Don McDowell?
Hello, folks. I gotta put these on. Sorry. I have, I've been quite familiar with Lake Menfromagog for a long time. My parents brought me here when I was about 10 years old, and since then, I've been, I've, you know, visited it many times. I've worked on the lake. I've played a lot on the lake. And starting five years ago, my wife and I bought a property on the side of the lake. So I clearly have some, some interest in this lake. I'm trained as a stream ecologist, a water biologist. I've done a lot of research with water chemistry in particular, and phosphates. And I've been educating people in ecology and environmental science for my entire career. And given that, I guess I have a couple of questions for for the people that are visiting us tonight, and that is, would you adopt, as the speaker from Dump said earlier tonight, adopt the precautionary principle? Are we really surprised that we put a dump on the side of Lake Menfromagog and that we have a problem? Of course, we have a problem. We're taking, thank you, Jim. We're taking garbage from northern Vermont, central Vermont, I'm not sure exactly how far south it goes. And we're putting it in one landfill in Coventry. A gentleman earlier suggested it's been 20 years. I didn't do the research before I got here. For decades, are we surprised we have a problem? And is the problem going to get worse? Of course, it's going to get worse. You can't take all this material and put it on the side of a large body of water and not expect it to get worse. Now, given that, I'm surprised, if I missed this, I missed this, but will you consider closing the dump? As Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources, as members of DEC, I would say you have a lot of pull, that you have a lot of weight. I know it, I, I was shocked when it was approved for another 10 years. I just couldn't believe it. Like, how long does Men from Magog have to pay the cost? It's been 20 years of dumping garbage here. When is enough is enough? And I think enough was years ago. I agree, it should go somewhere else. Vermonters will continue to produce garbage, but we don't need to take all their garbage. Men from Magog doesn't need to take all their garbage. It can go somewhere else. This is because, this is a political issue. It's not a scientific issue. I looked at the data up here. Yeah, the phosphates concern me, the clarity concerns me. I'll tell you what really concerns me is all the other things that are coming out of this dump that we're not studying right now that are going into the lake. The last thing I would say is, and I'll just throw this out here for Canadian friends, what if it was reversed? What if Magog had a huge dump, owned 25% of the surface area of the lake, and we owned 75% of it, and all of that material was coming our way? What if it flowed south? We haven't talked about that. I think we would be, I, I know we'd be having a very different conversation tonight. And I think our concerns would be very different. I think we need to, I think we need to put that hat on. Sorry, I'm going overboard, but I knew I only had one chance here. But I think we need to put that hat on. I think we need to really consider that. And I don't think we have. Thank you.
I believe we, we have at least one more question from the virtual participant.
Yes, I saw that a participant named Lizette Maillay had her hand raised. Lizette, if you want to unmute yourself and make a comment, please go ahead. You're still muted, though, so just be sure to click that unmute button.
Thank you. I was wondering about Mr. LeFlamme's previous comment, where he said that we're piloting this project in Vermont. I was wondering, and in the same phrase, he said that there was garbage dumps all over the states, and we had to address the issue. I was wondering if there are other states that are doing pilot projects as well? And if they are focusing on the same type of technology and the same type of contaminants? Just so we can see best practices? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Lizette. There are a few, there, it's not, the, the, one of the reports that are, that's up on our website is the so-called Brown and Caldwell Report. And then there's a secondary report after that that actually reviewed the Brown and Caldwell Report, a different consultant. That provides some background on the, you know, the existing situation and some of the existing technologies out there. There are a few, but not a lot. Again, I think we're, we're on the, certainly nationally, we're on the leading edge of this. So there, there is some work being done on this. There's a lot of interest in this, of course, because these concerns are not unique here. You know, there's, as you are aware, there's, there's global concern around the PFOSs and certainly here in the United States and in Quebec and the rest of Canada as well. There are two places where there is a lot of this concern. So, and unfortunately, as Secretary Moore was saying, you know, the, the accumulation of everything that we throw away, a lot of which does contain PFOSs or did contain PFOSs, winds up in landfills and then therefore winds up in leachates. So I mean, it's a, it's an emerging problem, both in terms of our understanding of these chemicals and our understanding of the sources of them. So to not go on, there, there is some work being done on it, but not a lot.
Oliver, are there other questions from remote participants?
There's one more.
Okay.
This is the last question. That's from someone named Walter Medwick. Starts with a comment, we no longer allow compost to enter the waste stream. We recycle bottles and cans to avoid them getting into the waste stream. We recycle metals to avoid entering the waste stream. And we recycle electronics to avoid their getting into the waste stream. The question, why doesn't A and R take a strong position to stop all leachate forever as policy today?
So whereas each of the, the products or components, constituents of our waste stream mentioned there are able to be pulled off of the waste stream, the leachate is generated by virtue of the things that we still throw away. And the fact that there is a working and open face of a landfill that is, is open to the weather, as well as the materials that we have thrown away break down over time. So unlike metals or plastics or compost, where there are ways to, to sort of pull that off, the leachate is a residual of what's left behind. And that's why reducing our waste streams is so important. Anything we do to reduce the volume of material being sent to the landfill is in service of reducing leachate. But it's not something that can be eliminated as long as we're throwing things away. I, there were no other people sign, oh, would you like, I'm sorry. Please.
Sorry, I keep getting too mad.
So my name is Sue. I'm actually a recent property owner here, and my brother-in-law lives up the street. And so I live in Idaho. But I thought of three things. Biology, if you all were fish, two of you would have huge cancerous lesions on you. So think of that. That's major. Economics, that landfill makes this area a lot of money. And the reason it's cited here is because of environmental justice. There's a reason why it's in this part of Vermont. Thirdly, that's related to politics. I just came, my sister lives in Addison County, which is next door to Chittenden County. And I was just in Lake Champlain yesterday. If this was going on in Lake Champlain, there would be 50 times as many people here, and we wouldn't be getting, oh, it's because of, we're throwing away too much waste. Or, oh, it's because we're not recycling enough. There would be a lot more going on here. So I'm new to this area. I'm not living here yet, but I totally see the economics of it and the politics of it are really what's going on here.
Thanks. I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I have a couple of questions. A lot of them were answered very short, so I'll have to be on my toes. Christina Cottonor, I'm a Derby resident my entire life. Thank you so much for coming to do this. We are often, can feel like we are the forgotten cousins, out of sight, out of mind. So thank you. We sincerely appreciate the time that you have taken today. I have a question specifically for Pete Emerson, but then I'd like to have a question for all of you. I think it might be a good one to end the program. The fish, the lesions. What are your next steps? I didn't hear that. In trying to identify, and you, you use the word unique. And I hope you, you're considering that the unique thing about this lake, other than its beauty, is that we are one of, I believe, the only lake in Vermont that has received thousands of gallons of leachate, just a few hundred yards from the lake. So maybe that's the unique part that is creating the unique lesions on the fish. So I'd love to hear what your next steps are. And also, you have a lot of people that are passionate about the lake. Water, water is our most precious resource, and we are all passionate about that. I mean, water is life. What can we do for you? What can we do to help? These are people energized, excited, passionate about it, and we want to help. Thank you.
It was Christine?
Yes.
Thanks.
How often we find your, your results?
Yep. So I, we can, we are providing sites, and some of these investigations are ongoing. So it's kind of hard to provide, like, terminal results. But we are, we are providing some reports, and, and one of them was the Vicki Blazer report. And we have Vicki back on board from the USGS. And so I can speak, I'm really glad you ended this way, because I did want to talk about this, and I felt like I missed my opportunity. I had said we're working with UVM. We're looking at taking the Bullhead genome and mapping it fully. That's one thing that we're proposing that we do. And I think we're going to get funding for this, and we're excited to work with UVM to have them map the genome. Once you map the genome, you can start looking at the genetics. And once we know which genes are being kind of hit, we can try to understand why those genes are being hit. And so that's way over my head. I don't do cancer research, so we're working with cancer researchers. We're working with the USGS because they are fish health specialists. And we have some fish health biologists here, but they don't specialize in this kind of thing. So we're not trying to solve our problems internally. We're partnering. And these people are excited because they look at this as something unique. Believe me, there are worse places from contaminant perspectives that have Bullhead than Lake Men from Magog. So we're not saying this is a contaminant-related issue specifically. We don't necessarily believe that at all, and we're looking at a lot of things, including viruses that cause cancer. So we're, we're looking at the big picture now, not just pinpointing it on one thing. We're including the PFAS, BFOS investigation and a lot of other contaminants when we dig into this a little deeper, once the money arrives. So we're, we're very excited to have the opportunity to actually solve this problem. We think we can. We think it's going to take some time. We have a lot of work to do. What can you do to help us? Well, it's, 2012 was the first notice we had. We were looking at the lake pretty regularly. We weren't focused intentionally on just one species. We look at kind of everything. We would have found it, but they found it first. So it was brought to us by anglers. And we aren't up in Lake Men from Magog, all the way up in, in Magog as often as we'd like to be, but they found it there for us, too. So yeah, people calling and saying we have a problem. We appreciate hearing it, because sometimes you're the first to know. Thanks. The first one to get a clap, you guys know this stuff?
I also appreciate your kind of closing question about what you can do. And as I am kicking off the tactical basin planning process, that is a case where we really are looking for community input into the planning process, both around what are some water quality issues out there on the ground that people have concerns about? You know, we have a lot of information about what's going on in the watershed, but a lot of you know your local streams, know your local shoreline, and might have things, or might be aware of things out there on the landscape that we don't know about. So, you know, I'll be sending out some information and getting the word out around the tactical basin planning process, sending out a survey. But as much as people are able to engage in that process and help us as a state understand what those issues are around the watershed, and then also what communities can do to address some of those things. You know, I get a little bit less involved in some of the topics that we've really talked about tonight, but the areas around phosphorus pollution really come from hundreds of different sources around the watershed. And it really does take everyone across the watershed to address some of those. Yeah, so we'll be letting people know about that process. And again, really appreciate if people could engage and let us know.
I guess I'll just add to Ben's comments. I mean, I think the fact that all of you are here tonight participating is a really good way to help us and to stay involved in this, to comment when we put the draft permit out, to continue to be involved in, in the processes where we ask for public input, and to get involved with your local watershed groups. You know, on both sides of the border, there are active watershed groups. As Oliver mentioned and others have mentioned, we meet a couple, at least a couple of times a year with those groups in our International Steering Committee. And your involvement and your interest, both locally with those groups and then reaching out to us as we do things, tactical basin planning, permitting, it's very helpful. So I'd say that really helps us a lot. So please stay engaged in our way, and we appreciate you coming out tonight, so.
I'm actually, I've brought up another question. I heard that the professor in Sherbrooke, at the University of Sherbrooke, who's conducting the monitoring of the study and putting it through the lake, is looking for U.S. participants. Do you have any knowledge of that, or are you working with them?
Our lake manager can speak to that.
Sure, I'll, I'll start by addressing that question. So Celine Gigan is the professor at University of Sherbrooke. We've, we've been in touch with her for a couple of years. There was going to be, before COVID, there was going to be this neat effort to put these passive samplers all throughout the lake and both sides of the border, throw them in the lake, retrieve them, and they can tell you a lot about what's happening with lake chemistry and water quality. That was put on hold because of COVID, and I think that, that's now been eclipsed by this observatory idea. The buoy that they're putting in costs roughly $25,000. Canadian, has some really neat functionality. But one thing it doesn't have is the ability to look at data in real time. We have a buoy in Lake Carmine, and soon there'll be two in Lake Champlain, which collect different water quality parameters, like temperature, dissolved oxygen, pH. It can give you an idea about biological productivity and cyanobacteria through different types of sensors. And those buoys, you can look at them in real time. You can go onto a website and see exactly what's happening in the lake at that time. So if you want to see what that looks like, there's one for Lake Carmine. It's on a UVM Epscore, EPSCOR site. So I would like to establish something like that in Lake Men from Magog in U.S. waters to complement what the Canadians are doing under this new observatory. And we'll, we'll start looking for funding. Dr. Gigan, I just had this conversation about a week ago. So, you know, it's, that costs between $30,000 and $40,000. We need to find that money, and if we can, we'll, we'll put that in place. So yeah, that's, that's what's going on there. I'm just, to your other question, how can you get involved? We have volunteers working across the state in three areas. We have lay monitors, so that's Chuck Golding for the main lake. We need a lay monitor studying next year for South Bay. It involves going out eight to 10 times a year in your boat to collect different water quality parameters. We put those together to form that lake scorecard I showed earlier, and we use that data to make decisions about, is the lake impaired? Does it need to be restored? Or is it a high-quality water that needs to be protected to keep it in that state? So that's one area. We need cyanobacteria monitors, people that we train to go out and make regular observations on a weekly basis if those have bloomed or not, gluconalge bloomed or not. More of those around the lake would be great. And finally, the Men from Magog Watership Association folks talked a little bit about Vermont invasive patrollers. Those are folks that help us identify invasive species outbreaks, be it starry stonewort, the phragmities. You know, and, and President Biden hasn't opened the border yet for Canadians to come into the U.S., but when he does, the zebra mussels are going to be first in line. They've been detected just north of the border. We've done some net, we've, we've dragged some nets behind boats, and we're still checking those samples. But we'll probably have zebra mussels in U.S. waters very soon. So, you know, the Canadians will, will complain about us sending leachate their way. They get a little revenge by sending zebra mussels our way. And then, you know, finally, I'm a little hesitant to say this, but, but I am a resident of Chittenden County. I'm very, I'm very, I'm therefore very interested to, to hear about the results of, of the pilot study that Casella will be dealing with, with A and R and DEC oversight to figure out what the options, the best options are for treating leachate. And I'll tell you why. Since the moratorium was put in place for treating of leachate here in Newport, that leachate is primarily going to Montpelier. It goes into the Winuski River, and it ends up in Lake Champlain. And so the commenter from Idaho was talking about Champlain. There is concern about this in Lake Champlain, and it's something that we need to figure out as, as a state, because it's, it's not going away. And be it Newport, be it Winuski, be it, you know, Montpelier, it needs to go somewhere. So having the best options to treat it and pre-treat it and keep it as little, keep it as, to the extent possible, out of our waters is, is what I'm personally interested in. And I am really looking forward to learning more about that study. So I'll stop my remarks there. Secretary D has a question.
Oliver, I have a question, and without, not a question, but a comment. In the studies we've done in, in, we have branched out. We have talked to folks in Montpelier. We have talked about a lot of the environmental groups in Burlington. And we were kind of on the leading edge, you know, talking about probably on the leading edge with talking about this. They were worried about one of the same things that have been happening all along. Understand that Montpelier has agreed, you know, basically because they knew they could probably handle it better than others. But Burlington and Essex both deny the leachate going to them. So this is so serious, and I'm, I am concerned here about us being the ones to take the leading edge, be the experimenters, do anything. All that leachate is going to come to Casella, whether it comes into Lake Men from Magog or not, it would come to Casella. And that's a dangerous thing right there, because I don't believe there is enough monitoring that happens of solid waste. There are so many inspections that go on at the landfill. Very, you know, that discussion would be active that day. And so I think that we really need to work together with other states. And if it turns out that Vermont might have to consider exporting leachate instead of importing it, because because that's going to happen. We've already talked about how that's not going to be doing that. I think those are the kind of concerns we have. And when we took it out of our hearts to go and talk with the folks in Montpelier and Burlington and Champlain and say, yeah, it is going into Lake Champlain, a little slower and a little later, it has, with us. I think we need to have, we're very small people here, very small population. And I think that's taking advantage. So we need to have this known throughout the state to be able to ban that.
I'm going to, thank you, Lenny. It's almost eight o'clock, so I'm going to see the Florida Secretary Moore.
And I just want to close out by, by thanking you all for, for participating this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to come and share our work and to hear from all of you. We did record the meeting this evening and both that recording and the PowerPoint presentations will be available on the aandr.gov website probably later this week. It takes a little bit of time to, to upload files as, as large as this one is due to its length. But thank you. And I encourage you to, as, as Pete said, continue to be involved, to participate in the process, the basin planning process, the commenting on the pre-treatment permit. We're grateful for your engagement and your time tonight. Thank you.
Which to me is a problem that it being right side of the balance. All right. So I think that's another sort of traction.
There's that whole attack from other regions. So, so we don't generally collect, push things out. All of our old analogics that try to, try to drive public attention. Well, I hope that's a good one. But I just, I just, I don't need all of them documented. They, they don't look like that. That's, that's, we're not charged for this.